Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zagum. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise as I introduce today's clergy. Today's clergy was invited by Counselor Jackson. And with Counselor Jackson out of the country, it's my honor to introduce with us who we have today is Reverend R. Joshua Fulton. He's been a minister in the city of Boston for the past 21 years. He first ministered with Teen Challenge Ministries, reaching out to those disenfranchised by drugs and alcohol. He and his wife Cynthia have seen many life changes in their ministry. And they are honored to serve the city of Boston. For the past three years, he has served as one of the Associate Pastors of Jubilee Christian Church, where he is an active member in men's ministry and mentoring young men. Reverend Fulton, as I said, is married, and they are the proud parents of two children, Eddie and Rebecca. Reverend Josh Fulton.
Thank you. It's an honor. It's a privilege to be here this morning for the last City Council meeting of 2014. I bring you greetings from Jubilee Christian Church, Bishop Thompson and his son Matthew Thompson. And if everybody at this point would bow their heads and hearts with me and pray. Father, this morning, before we ask you for anything, we sincerely thank you for all things. God, we trust that you are sovereign above the heavens and the earth, and that you have made promises that are immovable, and it is those that we seek this morning. Father, as we move forward, we ask that as we deal with the doings of man, that you would govern our hearts. God, that you would govern our thoughts and our words. That, Father, that we would make decisions that would impact the people that you have given us, that you have placed in our care. And that, Father, that you would guard us from the things that would move us in our hearts and minds. And that, Father, that we would be guarded from within and without. And that, God, most importantly, you would guide us. That, Lord, you would lead us in paths that are leveled, that those that follow us would not stumble. And that the decisions we made this day, God, would not be ones that were only adequate, but, God, they would be just. Father, this morning, we're bold enough to ask for the peace and the prosperity of our city. We pray, God, that at every intersection of life, the spiritual intersection, God, that the social intersections, economic intersections, educational intersections, as well as the political intersections, God, that Boston would be known as a city that is prosperous at the top as well at the bottom. And so, Father, today, we stand in faith that you are working in us and through us. Bless this meeting. Empower these men and women to make decisions that, Father, will impact the generations to follow. We pray this humbly yet boldly, in the mighty name of Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Fulton, for your inspiring message. Could you please remain with us and all of you remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Once again, thank you, Reverend Fulton. And we thank Counselor Jackson, in his absence, for having Reverend Fulton here today. Before we go on to presentations, I'd like to first welcome back, after a very momentous occasion, our colleague, Counselor Michelle Wu, who we announced last week had a beautiful baby boy. So, welcome back. And Connor, I know you're watching out there, so we want to see the baby here in the chamber before the meeting's over. If that's allowed, Mother. I'd also like to recognize that we have 12 graders from Mary Lyons Pilot High School in Brighton that are with us. Welcome. And although we have an abundance of toys up here, I'd like to ask, they have nothing to do with me. I am not Santa Claus, but maybe Counselor Baker knows who is. And so, I ask Counselor Baker to come up and make a presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Even if you see a toy, they're not for you. They're for my friend Kaia. Kaia, who I've been friends with Kaia for three years now. She was in Tufts Pediatric Hematology Cancer Center, I believe, back in 2011. And when she was there, she decided that she wanted to give something back to the kids that have to go there for treatment. So, this is very, I know a lot of us do toy drives and don't necessarily see where the toys go. So, Kaia actually decided to do a toy drive and bring the toys into where she was receiving treatment. So, Kaia, if you can come up, please. I know she has a speech for us. Like I said, this is Kaia's fourth year doing this toy drive. We're gonna go Monday at 10 o'clock, Monday, the 22nd, to the Tufts Pediatric Hematology Cancer Center. If anybody wants to come and join us, it's a pretty humbling experience. And Kaia is here with her grandmother Judy. Dana couldn't make it. I'm not sure where Dana is. And people know Renee's here also. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Kaia. You ready? Big speech.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to say thank you to Frank Baker and the other city councilors for helping with the 2014 Annual Kaia Rose Toy Drive. You guys are gonna make my friends at Tufts Pediatric Hematology Cancer Center happy. Happy holidays, season, to your family from me and Mom.
Yeah, we're gonna move those. Can we take a picture, yeah?
Come on up. We'll get a photo. But let's move the gifts down.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Now away.
Can we see you? And again, that's Monday at 10:00 a.m. at the Tufts Pediatric Hematology Center, if anybody wants to join. Thank you.
Congratulations to Kaia. And we all thank her for pulling this together for those who are not at home this season. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Yancy to come forward for a brief presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to invite two of my friends to join me at this time. Marjorie Claproot and Chris Spennazola. Could you come to the podium? Now, Chris is still a young man, but I had the opportunity of spending time with his family on Saturday during his celebration of his 60th birthday. And at that time, I promised him that the city council also took cognizant of that great day. And even though I read a citation from our illustrious mayor, there is a separation between the executive and the legislative branch. So, now, we took care of the executive on Saturday. Now, we have to do the work of the legislative body of the city government. So, with that said, I'd like to read a resolution that was actually passed last Wednesday in honor of Chris Spennazola. Don't let me mess up your name. Is that right? Okay. Whereas, Chris Spennazola, the founder and CEO of Anthony Spennazola Foundation, co-owner and general manager of Christina's Function, and a partner of Clapazola Partners with his beautiful wife, Marjorie Claproot, at this time celebrates his 60th birthday. And whereas, Mr. Spennazola, in partnership with his well-liked wife, Marjorie Claproot. How did you get in this resolution so long, Marjorie? Well-loved. Here's the important part. Co-conceived one of the most triumphant consulting firms in the nation, specializing in personal planning services for private, corporate, and nonprofit clients of any size. And whereas, Mr. Spennazola founded the Anthony Spennazola Foundation in 1986 in memory of his late father, Anthony Spennazola, a celebrated food and wine critic who wrote "Let's Eat Out" column for the Boston Globe from 1969 to 1984. And whereas, Mr. Spennazola's beloved mother, Dorothy Catherine Spennazola, following the untimely death of her husband in 1986, established Spennazola's, a popular restaurant in Framingham, Massachusetts. And whereas, Mr. Spennazola ran the Spennazola Festival of Food and Wine for 22 years, attracting over 5,000 guests, 130 VIP celebrity chefs, 130 vendors from around the globe to raise millions of dollars for hunger relief and homelessness programs throughout New England. Be it therefore resolved, oh, I forgot to mention, they also are the proud grandparents of six. Let me not forget that. Be it therefore resolved, that the Boston City Council and meeting assembled, congratulates Chris Spennazola for his many years of entrepreneurship in the food industry and his enthusiasm in raising millions of dollars for those who are in need of food and shelter, including the annual sponsorship of a fundraiser for the Sportsman's Tennis Club in District Four. Gotta add that in. And for his commitment for providing culinary scholarships for those interested in the food industry. And be it further resolved, that the Boston City Council proclaimed Saturday, December 13, 2014, as Christopher Spennazola Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you. Thank you. I would have done something like speeding across City Hall Plaza if I knew that Saturday was. But thank you to the council. Thank you to the chamber. Thank you to our distinguished guests. Counselor Yancy, thank you very much. And thanks for being there Saturday, and Mr. Mayor as well. I once, I'll keep it very brief. I was once at an award ceremony where the gentleman before me thanked his wife for bringing order to the chaos of his life. And I would like today to thank my wife for doing the exact opposite, bringing chaos. Chaos to the order of my life. But I'm a very lucky man. As you know, many of you know Marjorie, bone marrow transplant survivor since 2007. Is happy, is healthy. It makes everything possible, including our six grandkids from 20 to eight. And we're very, very proud of what we've done in this city together, and we'll continue to, hopefully, in the years to come. Thank you very much.
I'd like to invite our colleagues to come up for a family photo.
Not to that gavel. I gravitate towards them.
Marjorie and I ran for Congress in 1998.
Yes. And we both lost.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chris and Marjorie. And thank you, Counselor Yancy, for that presentation. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Docket number 1915, message and order authorizing the police department to accept two complete Blue Forest tracking units, a maritime automatic identification system, and one transponder to be provided by Massport to the Boston Police Department's robbery unit.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Counselor Murphy. Mr. President, where this is the final meeting of 2014, and the total cost of this donation from Massport is under $33,000, I'd like to move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1915 at this time. I thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1915. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1915 has passed. Madam Clerk, report of public officers and others.
Docket number 1916, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Julie Burrows as the Arts Commissioner of the Office of Arts and Culture.
Docket 1916 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1917, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Kena Saxton as the Commissioner of Licensing Board.
Docket 1917 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1918, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Lisa Mackey as the Commissioner of the Licensing Board.
Docket 1918 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1919, communication was received from Massport regarding Boston Logan International Airport, 2012-2013 Environmental Data Report, 2012/2013 EDR of the EEOEA File Number 3247.
Docket 1919 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1920, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and the papers acted upon by the city council at the November 19, 2014 meeting.
Docket 1920 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, mat is recently heard for possible actions. Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1530, audit for hearing regarding pushcart vendors and Faneuil Hall Marketplace.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, Counselor Lamatina, on 1530.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, December 15, our committee held a hearing on docket 1530 regarding pushcart vendors in Faneuil Hall Marketplace. That hearing was basically to declare some of the issues that we received, particularly from the pushcart vendors that were there with Ash Kennazi. Ash, can I say that right? Ash Kennazi Corporation. Kennazi, I'll have it right one day. They have new plans for Faneuil Hall Marketplace, but the concerns at that time was the pushcarts. They were left out in limbo in regards to whether they're gonna be able to return to Faneuil Hall. I think the main problem they had, there was no communication between the management and the pushcart vendors. But we were told that the pushcarts will remain. Right now, there's 56 pushcarts. And I believe that when their final plan, there'll be three that will no longer be there because of some issues in regards to movement at Faneuil Hall and egress. But there is some concerns that we do have. There were some vendors, two vendors, that were evicted. One vendor who paid all his rent, was on time, was evicted because they want to use his space for an elevator shack. So, he has two businesses there. Now, he only has one, and he's a business that L. Marketino, that's named his store. I think that we need to work with him. Let's see if we can get him another placement there. We also found out that there is $750,000 in arrears, with 40% of the retailers are responsible for that. So, we heard at the hearing that maybe $350,000 was for King Fish, who's no longer at that location. A concern that we had, a lot of these vendors are working there with all lease. And that really concerns us. And so, that's an issue that we want to address, particularly those working with all lease, transparency, making sure that the vendors and the merchants that they know what's going on during this with their plants. So, we recessed the hearing, and we will have another meeting with them to discuss it. Thank you.
Could I have a recess, please?
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to table that matter until next year so we can have another meeting to discuss some of the outstanding issues that the merchants and the pushcarts have at Faneuil Hall Marketplace. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Murphy. Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Counselor Lamatina for convening a speedy hearing on this as we were racing against the clock to finish business for this year. And I'm happy that he's tabling the matter. I believe that needs to go to a date certain. Not just table it to next year, but that's a parliamentary issue that I'm sure the clerk and you will address, Mr. President. Well, I will now, Counselor Murphy. We have a healthy hearing, had a healthy hearing on Monday. And I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for joining me in the offering of the hearing order. The last thing we wanted to see, and we had heard through the grapevine, that Boston's Faneuil Hall Marketplace, which kind of started a trend around the world of successful marketplaces, was about to be Manhattanized by the owners, Ash Kennazi of New York. We found out yesterday, Monday, in public hearing, that that's not true, that Ash Kennazi is working with the vendors and the pushcarts and the other vendors as they try to remodel and repurpose part of the marketplace. And I thought it was a healthy exchange, and I'm thankful that Counselor Lamatina is pushing it over into the new year so that we can keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on next door. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Thank you, Counselor Murphy, on that matter. Prior to taking a vote to table the matter, I just want to clarify that the city council's precedent on tabled matters has not been, as you articulated, and that we're looking at other legislative organizations to see what they do. And we will propose a rule, a new rule, in next year that we would need a 2/3 vote of approval from moving forward so that it's clear to all the members of the body that when you table the matter, you have to do this specific process to do it and to pull it out. And we'll revisit that in the first or second meeting of the 2015 calendar. Okay? So, at this time, Counselor Lamatina proposes to table matter 1530. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Docket 1530 has been tabled. How was that, Madam Clerk? How was that, Madam Clerk? You said excellent?
Excellent, I did, Mr. President.
1846, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1846, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend funds in the amount of $3,100,000 from the Boston Foundation for a period from January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2017. The purpose of the funding is to support enhanced anti-violence measures as the Boston Foundation's Street Safe Boston Program ends and transitions to a partnership with Boston's Boston Center for Youth and Family Street Worker Program.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counselor Ayanna Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Ron for providing packets, which will provide a detailed explanation as to how, if this order is to pass, and I recommend that it does, provided that happens, how these funds will be spent. Mayor Walsh has made it very clear that violence reduction is a priority of his in that this is a matter impacting every neighborhood and affecting our city. And, you know, what we realize is that the universe of people that are wreaking this havoc and bringing chaos to our communities is really a population of about 300 to 500 high-impact violent offenders, most of whom are youth. And the Street Safe Boston Program, in full disclosure, my husband, Conan Harris, is the program manager currently for Street Safe Boston, so I do want to need to state that for the record. But this is the brainchild of Robert Lewis, and I want to thank Paul Grogan and Robert Lewis for having the vision and the will to put forth this initiative, which has been an outcome-driven, innovative approach to intervention of our most violent offenders and high-impact players. We have so many efforts in the city that have been focused on prevention, but in my estimation, not enough that have been focused on that critical intervention. We shouldn't give up on anyone. And so I want to commend Mayor Walsh for his commitment to reduce violence in the city, and in doing so, for not allowing the Street Safe Boston innovative approach to die on the vine. Street Safe Boston will now be partnering with our Street Worker Program, and this is the best way to reduce violence, to get at those at-risk, proven and high-risk youth and young adults. I really want to underscore the young adult component of this. This is a program that will be focused on ages 16 to 24, connecting them to services, and again, intervention, you know, never giving up on anyone, and making sure that we're connecting them to opportunities and to a legitimate life. And we've seen, again, the Street Safe Boston model has been one that is outcome-driven. They have wonderful metrics and evaluative tools, and so I want to commend Mayor Walsh, Chief Arroyo, for bringing the Street Safe Boston Program here to the City of Boston so that we can have a multi-agency, citywide, comprehensive approach to reduce violence in our city. And so with that, I would encourage all of you to peruse the packet. Again, the age range, we'll focus on ages 16 to 24, and we'll be focusing on some 45 gangs in the City of Boston. Again, we're talking about a population of about 300 to 500 people. And I'm hopeful of what this innovative collaboration and partnership will yield in our efforts to bring about greater peace to our neighborhoods and to our great city. And I recommend that the order ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pressley. Counselor Pressley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1846. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, docket 1846 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could read 0362 and 63.
Docket number 0362, audit for hearing to review the fiscal year 2013 audited financial statement. And docket number 0363, audit for hearing to review the fiscal year 2014 budget.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Post Audit and Oversight Committee, Counselor Yancey.
As you know, many, many months ago, you appointed me the Chair of the Post Audit and Oversight Committee, and I thank you for that, Mr. Chairman, it was quite a gift.
And you've been very aggressive about it, too. I appreciate it.
And because you assigned me that responsibility, we conducted a historic number of post-audit hearings in these chambers. We reviewed the operational city government for two fiscal years, fiscal year 2013 and fiscal year 2014. We had hearings involving department heads from property and construction management, the Boston Public Works Department, administration and finance, the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, the Boston Public Schools, the Boston Transportation Department, the Boston Public Libraries, the Boston Police Department, the Law Department, Inspectional Services, Human Resources, the Public Health Commission, and the Governmental Relations Human Resources, again, purchasing, execution of courts, youth engagement and employment, the Elderly Commission, the Parks and Cemetery Departments, the Office of Neighborhood Services, Finance, Audit, and Budgeting Offices, assessing, the Department of Neighborhood Development, the Fire Department, the Department of Innovation and Technology, the Veterans Affairs Office, Office of Tourism, the Election Department, the Boston Development Authority and EDIC. And finally, our last hearing was actually conducted in these chambers yesterday, December 16, 2014. That covers more than 90% of the city's budget. The hearings focused on the actual performance of these departments, not just the financial performance, but we looked at their key performance indicators to determine how close those departments fulfilled the commitments that they made to this body when their budgets were approved. We saw many success stories within those departments. Some challenges, of course, remain. On the financial end, Mr. President, the breaking news this afternoon is that the city is going to report a budget surplus for fiscal year 2014. And that surplus is going to be $9.47 million. And that surplus was achieved even though the city did not draw upon its free cash. We did not draw upon the $40 million for the OPEB, and we didn't draw upon an appropriation from the Parking Trust Fund. So in a very real sense, the surplus was well in excess of $60 million, but officially it will be reported at $9.47 million, which is higher than the surplus for 2013 of $8.2 million. As you know, Mr. President, we studied every line of each of these departments, and we discern quite a bit of information. Unfortunately, we did not receive the information needed to complete the review of the contracts, which is a very exhaustive process, and we did not receive the final numbers for 2014. But we did have information on personnel, and I'd like to review that very briefly right now. We looked at all of the city's employees as of December 31, 2013, right in the middle of fiscal year 2014. We looked at the issue of residency, race, and salaries. And what was revealed by that snapshot, Mr. President, is that the City of Boston spent roughly $708 million of their salaries for city residents. The city spent $426 million to non-resident employees of the City of Boston. And I'm not suggesting for a moment that anyone who works in the City of Boston as a non-resident is doing so illegally. No, there are provisions, as all of us know, where non-residents are allowed to work. I just wanted to point out to colleagues that that resulted in 400, actually closer to $426 million going outside the city to non-residents. I also discern that there still remains significant racial disparities in terms of the city's salaries. As we all know, whites represent 47% of the city's population, but receive 61% of total salaries, which means that people of color who represent 53% of the city's population receive 39% of the city's salaries. I also took a look at average salaries, and I'll be very brief, Mr. President.
It's all good info, please.
Average salaries for the City of Boston as of that date, 12/31/2013, was $60,400. The average salary for white employees was $68,100. And the average salary for Latino and Latina employees was $50,800. The figure for African-Americans at that point in time was average $52,000, and the average salaries for Asian employees were $60,400, almost exactly the average for the city. In terms of percentages, that translates to Asians earning 88.7% of the white employees, Latinos 74.7% of white employees, African-Americans 76.3. Now, you may want to know what the relevant information is for male and females. The average male salary as of that day was $65,800. The average female salary was $56,900. I have additional breakdown in terms of salaries, but I know that when we go through every Ways and Means Committee meeting, at least for my past 31 years, I raise this issue with every department head in terms of looking at representation of people of color and women in their department, and I do that for a purpose. And the purpose is that the, every mayor, at least from Ray Flynn to Tom Menino to the current Mayor Walsh, says that we have a policy, as well the city council, of ensuring that every department, to the extent possible, reflects the makeup of the City of Boston. And the under-representation of people of color and the disparities between income of male and female has a direct impact on every community in the City of Boston, and no community should feel left out. And every community is asked to pay taxes, they should also share in the benefits of city government with regards to employment and contracts. And what I've discovered during these past 12 months of reviewing every department is that we've made progress in many of these areas, but based on these numbers, and I go on and on and on, I have several other statistics I can share with you, but I won't. But we still have a long way to go. So, Mr. President, again, thank you for the rare opportunity of allowing me to chair the Post Audit and Oversight Committee, but we still have work to do. The administration is busy closing out fiscal year 2014. Unfortunately, we do not have the audited financial statements as yet, we do not have the information on the contracts as yet. I have more than enough information to share with each and every one of you in terms of the financial status of the City of Boston, but I want to give the administration the other couple of days that they say they need to give us the closeout numbers for fiscal year 2014. So with that said, I would like to table these two dockets, until which time we get that information so I can provide you with a more comprehensive report. But thank you so much, Mr. President, for this opportunity, this time, to discuss the work of the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. I want to thank each of our colleagues for their support and even their participation, even if you participate by watching it on TV. I appreciate your attention because this is a very important function of city government, and I would like to thank Kate Sullivan and Daisy De La Rosa and the other members of the central staff. I want to thank my staff for all their work, and I want to thank particularly every department head in city government. It's a major inconvenience for any of them to come to these chambers for any matter, but they recognize the importance of the oversight responsibility of the Boston City Council. There's no question they're going to show up when they're asking us to approve their budget, but this is sort of a new experience for some of the members of the administration to account for the actual operation of their department financially and otherwise. And they've done so, and they've been very cooperative, so I thank Mayor Walsh. I thank the liaison to the city council. James has had a pretty challenging time dealing with this, but they did so, did so well. So I want to, at this time, close and just move that we table these two matters until early next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Thank you for the effort, because it was enormous effort on your behalf for all of us and for the City of Boston. Thank you for the information, and that you went over the time, clearly. That thing just has evaporated anyways. People just take the time they need, and, which I think is appropriate most of the time. So your efforts, and I thank the administration for their cooperation on behalf of the council. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question to the Chair. Did you take into account seniority of city employees when factoring in who's getting paid what? Because most union pay scales have to do with longevity, and I think that could be a part of this disparity here, and if it is, it's not accurately reflected in the comments of the Chair of Post Audit. I'm just wondering if that was included in your assessment. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Yancey?
Yeah, I'll be happy.
Before you do that, could you make sure that those, that information that you have, that you articulated here today, that you send out to all members of the councils?
I intend to.
Oh, you do? Okay, thank you. And if you could address that, and then we could move on to the vote to table.
Okay, thank you very much. Firstly, I want to thank Counselor Murphy for that question. I did not control for hiring dates and for seniority or union membership. I have a more detailed analysis on a department-by-department basis, but let me assure you of one thing. And I did sort by beginning time in city government, and I still discern significant disparities. There have been employees who have been hired in the 1970s who are roughly at the same position relative to other members of the staff. So seniority does play a role, I agree with you on that, but you will be surprised how persistent some of these disparities are in various departments, union and non-union. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey moves that docket 0362 be tabled. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, docket 0362 has been tabled. And Counselor Yancey moves that docket 0363 will be tabled. All those in favor say aye? All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, 0363 will be tabled. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1816, audit for hearing regarding the cost of living adjustment, COLA, for retirees and raising the base amount.
Chair recognizes the Chair on the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Moxium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first thank you and the chief sponsor of the hearing order, Counselor Murphy, for holding this, for sponsoring this hearing order with the Committee on Ways and Means, which was held last Monday. It opened up the opportunity for the city council, as well as members of the retirees, to voice their concern in advance of the valuation that will be determined in January and the recommendations voted on by the retirement board. We had testimony given by Tim Smith, the executive officer of the retirement board, as well as Jonathan Lucas, who is the CFO of the Boston system. It was a very informative hearing. It was a very informative hearing and hopefully instructive to the Retirement Board going forward. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the Chair, Counsel Siomo, for hitting that hearing in before the end of the year. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for participating. Two years ago, the city of Boston, as well as other cities, became under the provisions of, I believe it was Chapter one-eighty-eight, which will allow a retirement board to incrementally raise the COLA base for all retirees. And at that time, I, as an individual member of the body and as president, went to the Retirement Board hearing and testified that because the COLA base had not been increased in fifteen years, that it should go from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand dollars as the new COLA base. The Retirement Board rejected my plea and implemented an increase from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand dollars at that time, which accounts for thirty dollars per year for each retiree. Or if you break it down to a weekly function, about fifty-seven cents a week. And a couple of minutes ago, we heard our good Chair of Post Audit announce that the city is going to announce today a nine-point-four-seven million dollar surplus. Part of that surplus is on the backs of these retirees. It would cost three million dollars, we learned yesterday, to raise the COLA by another percent, and up to nine million dollars to raise it to sixty thousand. And these are the same folks that we took away City of Boston healthcare and had them go on Medicare or Medicaid a couple of years ago, saving the city about thirty million dollars a year, healthcare costs. So, I know we're worried about numbers. Yesterday, in this chamber, we saw the lives behind those numbers. And they're people that have served honorably and decently for this city for a number of years, given their best over across disciplines, whether it's police, fire, teachers, librarians, whatever. They gave this city their best for their career, and the longer they live, the closer to the poverty line they become. And I think it's a moral, a moral right of ours, or a moral objective of ours, should be to see that those folks are caught up in the safety net that we try to catch everybody else up in, seeing they were our employees. And that's why, Mr. President, I'd like to table this matter, to carry it over, because we heard from the Retirement Board that they were doing the evaluation, and they wouldn't have it complete until January. And it was a good exercise for this body to have that hearing and get it all out on the record. Prior, we set the table for whatever the setting is going to be, and I do believe the administration is looking favorably on this. I think it would be important to continue the dialogue into the new year as the numbers get firmed up, so that we can have, if enough of us feel like I do, that this is a priority or should be, that it should be included in the two thousand sixteen budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy would like to move that matter eighteen-sixteen be tabled. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, eighteen-sixteen has been tabled.
Docket number one-eight-four-seven, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant in the amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, Park Land Acquisitions and Renovations for Community Program, to provide capital improvements relative to Phase Three of La Pesty Park project located in the neighborhood of East Boston. Would you like me to read both of them together?
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. Docket number one-eight-four-eight, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept a grant award in the amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the United States Department of Interior's National Park Service through the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program administered by the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the Division of Conservation Services, to provide capital improvements relative to McLaughlin Playground located in the Mission Hill neighborhood of Boston.
Out of work. I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services, Veterans Affairs, Counsel Lamatina on docket eighteen-four-seven and eighteen-four-eight.
Twenty fourteen, the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs held a hearing regarding acceptance of grants for La Pesty Park in East Boston and McLaughlin Park in Mission Hill. Docket number eighteen-four-seven was in order to accept a grant of four hundred thousand dollars from the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Currently, La Pesty Park is under construction. There's three phases. Right now, we're under Phase Two. This grant would enable the city to begin the third and final phase, which would focus on the Harbor area, Harbor Walk area. Amenities would include space for canoes, kayaks, landscaping near the water's edge, and a children's play area. For anyone who has not visited La Pesty Park, I would say you should visit that park. It has some of the most spectacular views of the city of Boston. On the first phase, we just built a brand-new soccer field, and currently, we're building two new basketball courts. There hasn't been renovations in that park since nineteen ninety-two. We're hoping that the biz will go well in the summer and construction will sign in the fall. And it's supposed to be completed in the summer of two thousand and sixteen, so I would recommend that this docket passes.
So this is on eighteen-four-seven?
Yes, on eighteen-four-seven.
Did you want to speak on eighteen-four-eight also?
Yes, on eighteen-four-eight, it was in order to accept a grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the National Park Service through the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program, and it's administered by the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. This will provide improvements to McLaughlin Park in Mission Hill. The goal of the project being funded will be to improve access, add paved trails, install seating, improve grading, drainage, create an overlook to take advantage of the scenic views, and create signage and wavefinding system to encourage users to explore the extensive trail system. What's great about this grant is basically to provide water access, but it's to provide views of the Boston Harbor and the Harbor Island. It looks like a great park. I'm looking forward to visit that park in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Presley, your button's pressed? Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passes of docket eighteen-four-seven. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket eighteen-four-seven has been passed. And Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passes of docket eighteen-four-eight. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket eighteen-four-eight has been passed. Madam Clerk?
Docket number one-three-three-two, audit for hearing on food insecurity in Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counselor Presley on docket thirteen-thirty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it was a month ago, we held a hearing. My dear friend, Counsel O'Malley, put forth a hearing order to discuss food insecurity in the city of Boston, and I commend him for his leadership in doing so very often. We're only talking about hunger in a seasonal way during the holiday season, but the reality is that food insecurity is not a seasonal issue, and it is a growing issue. And so after having a very robust hearing, we decided to have a working session, which we had yesterday. We had twenty-plus people in attendance. It was a very robust hearing. We had participation from Love and Spoonfuls, the Greater Boston Food Bank, ABCD, Fair Foods, Feed the Hood, Fill the Fridge, just to name some of the representatives that were at the table. And the crux of our conversation yesterday was about a population of those who are food insecure that we don't talk about enough, and that is our elders. Much of the debate has been on the vulnerability of our families and our children, but as I said previously, we have a number of seniors that are living on tea and toast and choose between eat and heat. But we also learned that even if we are doing a better job at increasing access to food, that often that food is not nutritious. And so that was really the crux of the conversation yesterday, is what do we need to do to support our elders, not only in access, but in food nutrition and in education. And so, I'm going to now turn it over, and I'll just say that, you know, food is something that can help to address not only poor health, but isolation. It's an opportunity, when done right, in providing healthy congregant meals or potlucks within a community, to build community and to continue to foster those connections, which are so very important, to support people not just aging in place, but aging in community. So that was the crux of yesterday's working session. Many takeaways, many more matters that we're going to work on in tackling this issue. But I want to turn it over for a final word to my dear friend and the author of this hearing order to talk about next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your leadership on this issue. You know, when we talk about hunger, when we talk about malnourishment, when we talk about food insecurity, we're talking about a problem that we can solve. And just as the face of hunger has changed, so too has the solution, has the solution changed. And that cities are really stepping up in big ways, working with our nonprofits, working with some of our social service agencies, to address this issue, to solve this issue. There are some really exciting things happening in the city of Boston. One of the great byproducts of the initial hearing in yesterday's working session has been some better collaboration with our nonprofit partners. The city itself, this city has done some great things, and I want to note Edith Murnane did yeoman's work as our food czar for the city of Boston, the Director of Food Initiatives. Very sad to see her go, but as we look for her replacement, as we look for ways to grow that office, I think that this City Council can play an integral role in identifying the needs and really working to identify the solutions. As the Chair said, yesterday's working session really focused on the elder, the elder population, many people who are on extraordinarily fixed income, who often have high medical bills and who sometimes need to choose between healthy options for food or paying for their medicine. I mean, these are all anecdotes that we've heard, that we've lived through, that we've seen, that we've talked to constituents about. So when we look at the nonprofits, what they're doing, like Love and Spoonfuls or ABCD, or Fair Foods, or Feed the Hood, the food pantries throughout the city, we're seeing how things are working and changing, but there's more work that needs to be done. And one of the best roles that this body can play is to continue to work with these stakeholders, to grow it, to make sure that every neighborhood is protected and included in this conversation. So I'd like to ask that this table be, that this matter be tabled, excuse me, that we can continue to work on this and continue with the working sessions going forward. Some of this is going to be just putting people in touch with the right agencies, others may be some legislative actions that we need to take, some structural changes that need to be made. There's a lot of solutions here that we can do, and it's going to take some time working on it together. So forward to continuing to work on this. This is a very, very important issue, and this is one that we can absolutely solve. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your leadership, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves that docket thirteen-thirty-two will be tabled. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, thirteen-thirty-two will be tabled. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, please.
Docket number one-nine-two-one, Counsel Lenny for Counsel Murphy.
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passes of docket nineteen-twenty-one. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket nineteen-twenty-one has passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there are five late-file matters, and absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. I hear no objections, so the matters are so added. The clerk will please read the first matter.
December fifteenth, twenty fourteen, to the Honorable Maureen Feeney, Office of the City Clerk, One City Hall Square, Room six-oh-one, Boston, oh-two-two-oh-one. Dear Madam Clerk, please note that I will be out of town from four p.m. Monday, December fifteenth, twenty fourteen, until twelve fifty-five on Wednesday, December seventeenth, p. two thousand fourteen. Please let me know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Mayor Martin J. Walsh.
The first late matter will be placed on file.
From the Office of the Mayor, Martin J. Walsh, December ninth, twenty fourteen, to the City Council. This is a, dear councilors, I transmit herewith for your approval, a homeroad petition to the General Court entitled, "A Petition for Special Law Regarding an Act Relative to Certain Affordable Housing in the City of Boston." And this pertains to, this special act would actually allow the BHA to seek to participate in a redevelopment using state funds to revive the severely distressed Orient Heights public housing development. This would bring in line into the state funding of public housing of other proposals that have been made.
The second late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Government Operation.
From the Office of the Mayor, Martin J. Walsh, to the Boston City Council on December ninth, twenty fourteen. Dear councilors, I transmit herewith for your approval, a homeroad petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Relative to Certain Affordable Housing in the City of Boston." This particular act seeks to participate in redevelopment of using federal funds to revive this barely distressed, wittier public housing development. Again, this references other public housing that have used this funding. And it is signed sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
The third late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Government Operation.
From the Office of the Mayor, Martin J. Walsh, to the City Council, December eighth, twenty fourteen. Dear councilors, I transmit herewith for your approval, a homeroad petition to the General Court entitled, "A Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Relative to Segregated Reserve Funds in the City of Boston." This homeroad petition will relieve the city of Boston and the School Department from the unnecessary requirements of annually setting aside funds for extraordinary expenditures. This homeroad petition is necessary so that the city of Boston will no longer be forced to comply with unnecessary administrative tasks required by maintaining these funds. I urge your honorable body to join me in the effort to ensure greater efficiency and control in the city of Boston's appropriation and budget process. Sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
The fourth late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Government Operation.
In the Boston City Council, I only have notice. A report from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, which was referred to the City Council. It reads, "Dear councilors, docket number one-six-eight-eight, a message in order for confirmation of the appointment of Tyrone Kendall Jr. as an alternate member of the Board of Appeals for a term expiring October first, two thousand and sixteen. The recommendation of the Committee Chair, Counsel La Matina, is that the appointment ought to be confirmed."
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, Counsel La Matina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket sixteen-eight-eight, appointment of Tyrone Kendall Jr. as an alternate member of Zoning Board of Appeals. We heard this, we had a hearing yesterday afternoon. Mr. Kendall is a licensed plumber that has worked for both his family and his family residential plumbing business, and also works on commercial projects as a member of Local Twelve. His involvement in Local Twelve introduced him to the Building Pathway Program, and he transitioned from full-time plumbing work to administrative work as a program project He's actually running a very highly competitive and successful program, and he works in conjunction He's actually running a very highly competitive and successful program, and he works in conjunctions with all building trade unions with the goal of diverse, diversified trades. Mr. Kendall's work as a plumber on both residential and commercial projects, combined with his work on the building pathway program, makes him a fine candidate to serve as an alternate representative from the Building Trades Council of Boston. Very impressed with Mr. Kendall. I think he's going to be a great member on the Board of Appeals as an alternate, but I think that all of us here, who we have to know and will be very happy that he's on that Board of Appeals. Thank you.
And thank you, Council Lamatina. I heard you humming in between your comments. Is there something going on?
One of my council members is.
Councilor Lamatina moves acceptance of his report and confirmation of the Tyrone Kendall as part of docket 1688. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1688 has been confirmed. All right. We're moving right along here. Green sheets. Opportunity for folks to pull a matter from the green sheets? Okay. Councilor Lamatina, you've hit the buzzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, please take from page two the green sheets under assigned for further action, docket, docket number 1733, on the redevelopment of North Hampton Square, which is also filed on page four.
Docket, docket number 1733, which was assigned for further action on 12/3/2014. Approval that will continue redevelopment of North Square Campus in the South End, which has already received its first reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We had a hearing on this matter on Tuesday, December 2, 2014, and took our first vote on this matter on Wednesday, December 3. Today, I'm asking for your second vote to remind you this project will continue to redevelop, the redevelopment of North Hampton Square, and will allow for all remaining phases of the, of the project, resulting in more than 537 units of housing, at least 64%, which will be affordable, a $1.5 million annual lease payment to the Public Health Commission, and a $9 million lump sum payment for the Albany Tower. Improving this project, this phase of the continual project will improve accessibility to residents, the fitness centers, the garage for the disabled, office space for the Public Health Commission, and the Boston EMS, and green roof improvements over the garage space for urban guiding for residents and office personnel. My recommendation, my recommendation to the body is this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lamatina. Councilor Lamatina moves that docket 1733 is, will get its second reading today. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan.
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu. Council Wu, yes. Council Yancy. Council Yancy, yes. And Council Zakeham. Mr. President, we have nine votes, sorry.
A docket 1733 has had its second reading and passed 10 affirmative votes. Yep. There are, there is, hold on. Two. Late file matters for the consent agenda, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the matters are added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda has been adopted. Councilor Murphy, for what purpose do you write?
Requesting unanimous consent to make a brief statement, Mr. President.
Hearing no objections, you have the floor.
Is Molly O'Connell, who's seated over there to my right, and some other people straight ahead, and some other behind some other people, it's her last day today in my office. She's been there three years. Stand up, Molly, and show them why. Third of the three folks who were in staff or on the council that were in a family way earlier this year and is about to give birth, and we hope healthily and happily in the next few days, but she's been a great addition to my office for the past three years, and feel like I'm losing my right arm. Good luck, Molly. And my other thank you is to all of you in the chamber and to the central staff and to the members of the City Council, staff members, who came to my father's wake and funeral last week. And I considered myself a very lucky person to be 57 years old and have had my mother and father in my life for all of those 57 years. And, you know, your dad is your first hero, and he was in pain the last few times I saw him. I can say this, he is no longer in pain. And if there is an afterlife, and I believe there is, he was in his glory on Thursday with the police motorcycles and the honor guard and the U.S. Navy presence at the cemetery. It was a great, great day for him and a proud day for our family, but it doesn't happen without friendships, and the friendships you forge over time, and many of them, for me, are here right in this chamber and in this building. And I just want to say a heartfelt thank you from my family, to all of you and yours, and Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Wu, is your son still in the building? But you won't bring him out here so we can? We'll bring him to a later meeting. All right, I won't put you on the spot, although I just did. Council Flaherty, for what purpose do you write?
Unanimous consent to make a statement.
Hearing no objections, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Council Presley, and I would just like to invite our colleagues this Friday, December 19, from 10:00 to 11:30 in the Pimonte Room for Survivors of Homicide Victims Awareness Month. Council Presley, as you see from our agenda and her staff, it created a great resolution to recognize and to honor survivors who, you know, we in our own neighborhood just had a family who just lost a son and a nephew to senseless violence as of Friday night. So we can speak to them because we both know the mom and dad and the aunts and uncles and the cousins, but nonetheless, anytime that there's a homicide in the city, there's a family that's grieving. And so this recognizing homicide awareness month would be a great opportunity for us to invite survivors in, to hear them as they transform their pain and their anger into action. So if you have some time in your schedule, swing through the Pimonte Room and say hello to some of the great faces of Boston who've lost loved ones and would like an opportunity maybe to meet their district or their at-large counselor to share their thoughts and concerns about senseless crime and violence, but also as to how do we move forward as a city in embracing the struggles of survivors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. And at this time, I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment myself to just, at the conclusion of 2014 session, to thank each and every one of you for your cooperation, for your guidance. We had a very productive 2014 as a Boston City Council. We worked very closely with the new administration, and I'm just thankful that we did have the successes we had and appreciate all that you contribute. Thank you for working with me in my first year as president of the body. And with that, I'd like to wish all of your family members, each of you, a very happy holiday season and a Merry Christmas and a most prosperous 2015. I'd like to ask all guests and members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Ayanna Presley, Dave Walker from Hyde Park. Councilor Presley asked also that we say a prayer in memory of her mom, Sandra Presley, who would have been 66 today. And, and also, Councilor Baker, for Neil A. Mullane, Sr. For Dorothy F. Runkel. And for Angel Tolan. For Councilor Siomo, Mark Rosenbaum. For Councilors Flaherty, Baker, and the chair, John Dwyer, who was the young entrepreneur who was killed this week down in Adams Village. For Council, for Councilor Flaherty and the chair, Winifred Carney, Harold Donovan, and Rita Higgins. For Councilor O'Malley, Anna V. Russo. For Councilor Yancy, Patrick Jusjelet. Ronald E. Weston. And, and also Dave D. Dubbs Walker. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. By the way, I've been informed by Councilor Presley that, that Matt O'Malley, I hope, can I say it? Does she know? I'm always a little irvy with this, that Matt, Matt O'Malley got engaged this week, Thursday. So congratulations to Council O'Malley. We have a lot happening here on the council these days. Baby. The chair moves that when the council adjourns, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, January 7, 2015, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Have a great holiday season, everybody.[1700.66]